Everybody ready?
Ready.
Ready when you are.
Okay, then I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Director Martin.
Here.
Director Sewell.
Here.
Director Grasha.
Here.
Vice President Duncan.
Here.
President Wright.
Here.
Thank you, we have quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Pinkney, would you please remind us of the rules of the procedure for our board meetings at this time?
Yes. The Board of Directors adopted a Board of Directors handbook and included in that in Section 10 is the policy for conducting board meetings. And so I'm just going to touch on some of those rules that apply to the conduct of the meeting this afternoon. First, all notice meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as procedural guidance. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the President as the Presiding Officer. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No Board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. In order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you. Dory, I don't have my ear pods on, so if I'm breaking up or whatever, would you let me know and I'll put them on?
Absolutely, thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
I also wanted to point out that in terms of public comment at our meetings, that the agenda provides, in all caps, that members of the public may submit comments addressing items on the agenda by emailing Dory Petit, and it provides her email address prior to the start of the meeting at 3:00 PM. And then it also provides a call-in number. And then, as you know, we also, in today's agenda, item number five, it provides that this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the Board on matters within the Board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the Board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. So there's ample opportunity for those interested in submitting comment, even though we're doing these meetings electronically, they can submit their comments via email. They can also submit their comments by attending the meeting and they can make comments at the beginning of the meeting under item number five today. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance because it's a study session. And we'll go into the employee recognition. Never did do the pins of Arden, and there was somebody else that deserved a pin, but that was two meetings ago or something. Anyway, so this time we have Basam, who's a Field Operation Manager. We have Matt, 10 years, Matt. That's your 10-year milestone there. And Director of Engineers Danny Friend, 23 years. Danny, are you that old? Oh, anyway. Anyway, congratulations, you guys, and thanks for your many, many years of service. Okay, next one is public input. If any of the members, we don't have any public. Should I say it? Should I say it anyway? Our members of public, this is the time of the public forum?
No need, if nobody's here.
I know, okay. So if nobody's here, I was just waiting to see if anybody happened to get on the line. Okay, so we will not have any public input this morning or this afternoon. Next item, six. Don't kill me, you guys, but I'm gonna add another one to our list of names for our wastewater treatment plant. I went around and asked questions to, and asked some people around the district what they thought. You know, I want to get people's ideas. And actually, the word management, nobody thought that they'd ever heard it in a wastewater treatment plant before, so it kind of went to the bottom of the barrel. So, and that's fine, that's okay. But the names that did pop up that some of the people around the district liked was similar to what we have on the agenda today, which we've always, which we've had there for quite some time. Either Mission Springs Water District Regional Waste Water Rec, Regional Water, excuse me, Regional Water Reclamation Facility, or just Mission Springs Regional Water Reclamation Facility. Those were the two top choices. So it would either be to get rid of the water district and change West Valley to regional, or keep in the water district and change West Valley to regional. Anybody have any comments? And I swear, this is the last time we'll do. Yes, Director Martin. You're muted, you're muted.
I got you, you're good.
Okay. Am I on?
You are on.
Okay. Regional. That's what I would prefer, and keep it Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any? I like that one too, but, and when you write them out, that one actually looks the best in writing. So, just to let you know, in my opinion. Anybody else have any suggest comments about that? Anybody want to make a motion? Hey Randy, Director Duncan, you're muted. Oh, I think Dory's doing all that.
I was just gonna agree with Russ and make a motion if that was, if that's where we were.
Where, that's where we are.
Comments?
I don't hear any. Okay, I will entertain a motion.
It looks like Director.
Thank you. Did you hear that? Finally.
Finally, I didn't, I didn't know what you were saying thank you to, sorry, I didn't get that.
I'm sure.
Anyway. Okay, I can't see you, Director Grasha, so sorry. Okay, so the motion, Director Martin.
Are you gonna ignore me now that you acknowledged me?
Oh, okay, well, did you want to say something? I asked, okay, I'm sorry.
It's a Board of Directors meeting, I'm an elected, duly elected member of the Board. And yeah, I'd like to say something.
Okay, sorry, I should have asked each Director, you're absolutely right. So I've heard from Director Martin.
We've got two lawyers here. To make sure the Directors don't get out of line. And now you're talking over me after you've recognized me. At some point, ma'am, you're gonna learn how to do this. You've been here 32 years, tonight might be a good time to start.
Director Grasha, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah.
About number six.
Let me get my place. The district had just received a from your Regional Water Quality Control Board, recognize this facility. And in the letter that they've written us.
It's about the naming of the plant.
Right, well, it refers to the West Valley Water Reclamation Facility, Riverside County. So it sounds like it, I don't, we've added regional and we took it back out, now we're adding it again. And I don't know if that's gonna have an effect on this correspondence that we have giving us permission by the Regional Quality Control Board to build the plant, so.
I doubt, I don't think so, because it's up to the Board's prerogative what we call it. Not the Regional Board's prerogative.
Right. We applied under one name, and now we're changing the name a week after we were given permission by the state to build the plant.
Would you, would you?
Well, I.
On the name, it doesn't matter about what you're talking about, that's no problem. But what about the actual name, which, do you have a preference?
Not really, I just thought it should be pointed out that it's already been recognized by the state under another name, so.
That's not gonna bother it, that's no problem, no.
Okay, I know.
Are you done?
On this item, thank you.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion. Russ, did you already?
Randy already made the motion and I seconded it.
Okay, sorry, okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Director Martin.
Yes.
Director Sewell.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, I can't, there we go. Director Grasha.
I was muted again by the Secretary. So when you have a roll call vote, you need to leave.
I unmuted you, Director Grasha, your vote, please.
Thank you, that would be a yes. The only.
President Duncan.
Yes.
And President Wright.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Wallen.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to mention that I had originally planned to have Steve Ledbetter here to bring you up to date on much of the detail. And at that point, I'm sure that we can get a lot of information that we have, and I'm anxious for you all to hear the progress that we've made in this plant. It is essential that we get this plant built and continue with the schedule that we're on. It looks good, but Monday, I will have Steve here and he will have a presentation for you on the actual progress that we've made, to date since the last time we reported on this.
Okay, great.
I would prefer that we wait till Monday to discuss the rest of this.
Okay, great, thanks, I look forward to that. To have a update on the Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility. There you go, thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. Would any Board members like to pull anything off of the consent agenda for discussion or to vote on separately?
Yeah, I'd like to talk about the registrar demands.
Okay, I will pull the registrar's fans off. And what, and what would you like to discuss about it?
I think you go on the vote and then we'll vote on that separately.
Can I remind you guys, this is a study session and the board meeting will take place on.
Thank you, okay.
So do you want to talk about the register now?
If you, I pulled it off for the moment for discussion. It doesn't mean it will be off for the vote, but.
Right, okay.
So the vote for discussion.
I gotta find it. Well, as you know, and why, one of the reasons why I think the attorneys have clamped down so tightly on the Director's ability to correspond with each other here with the community, I had put in a public information request for copies of all the credit card statements that are carried by all district staff and all directors. That request was refused by legal counsel and the General Manager. I've received information.
This is by the director.
Yes, and I'm getting there, ma'am. There's no entry on here, and nor have I ever seen an entry that shows payments to, for credit card monthly credit card statements or bills. So I'd like to know how that is. How are those paid if they're not being paid by check or? I see payments to banks, but they are.
Okay, okay.
I see one here for $111,000, another for $110,000, another for $145,000. And I'm afraid that you're probably shoehorning in the credit card payments with other expenses that are going out in these checks, because I can't imagine you're spending $100,000, over $100,000 or over $350,000 in this month alone in credit card payments. So I'd like those to be broke down. I want to know what you're doing, you know, why are you trying to hide the credit card statements? What is it you don't want the public to know?
Okay.
What you're doing in the dark of night when no one's looking.
Got your question, got your question. Okay, Mr. Wallen, who would you suggest?
I would suggest Matt. No, we're not.
Excuse me, excuse me. We did respond to Mr. Grasha's request on September 30th, so he has that response.
And.
For this question?
You don't get to weasel out how you pay for those expenses, okay? You can't say that it's too hard to get the information together. You're writing a check every month to pay those expenses. I want to know what you're paying and how much, and to who.
No problem. You will get those answers. They're very simple answers and there's a, you know, don't worry about it. So I guess Matt, I guess.
Well, you've had them.
The payroll, what, where does payroll? I don't know.
Payroll, Nancy.
Pardon?
Let Matt respond to that. No, and there's not $110,000 in
Okay, would you?
Credit card, but let Matt answer the question.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Matt.
Can you hear me, Madam President?
Yes, I can.
Sorry. Our current credit card vendor is Wells Fargo Bank. So the payments will be, the vendor name will be Wells Fargo Bank. Whether or not there is a credit card payment on this statement, I am not sure. I would have to look through it. Our old credit card vendor was Cal Card. And it was paid through US Bank was the administrator of that program. But our current credit card administrator is Wells Fargo Bank.
So if they're, if, okay, so are they on this report right here?
I don't see one on this report, only payroll entries on this report, so it could be that it was not paid during September. But I can find that out.
Okay, the credit card, you mean credit card payments?
Yes.
But they would usually just show up on these, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, under the name of Wells Fargo.
Correct.
Okay. There you go. Okay, any other questions on that? Registrar demands while I have it pulled?
President Wright, Director Grasha's has his hand up.
I see that, but first I wanted to ask Director Martin.
Go ahead.
Any questions on the?
No, I'm sorry, no, no question.
Okay. Director Sewell.
No question.
Vice President Duncan.
No, thank you.
Okay, Director Grasha.
Yeah, well, there's, I'm looking right at it here, and I see that Wells Fargo was paid two checks this month, one for $111,000 and one for $110,000. And that's why I'm curious, how, how do you possibly run up $100,000, over $100,000 a month in credit card expenses? And if you're not, then how come?
Okay, well, Matt, what's the answer to his question? What is the, are you looking for it on your, on the report?
Can you hear me now? Sorry, I'm having mute issues.
Yes, yes.
Those two entries that you're looking at there are payroll tax deposits. Those are not credit card payments. And that's why those amounts are so large. And yes, I am looking, and as quick as we get the information, if not today, definitely Monday, we will get the credit card payment information back to you.
That'd be great, Matt, thank you. Okay, I need to also ask the numbers of the public, I'll just, this is just formal, members of the public, if they would like to pull anything off the consent agenda. Don't think we have any members of the public, but.
Madam President, I did have somebody just log on. Fortunately, Amanda's already left the meeting, so I'm not quite sure. Phone number ending in 8739. Do you wish to?
Yes, George, but yeah, I don't have any comment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So without, without going through that anymore, I will go to item eight, Public Affairs Report.
Guys, please allow me to control your mute buttons, thank you.
Sorry, I missed the directions earlier. Good afternoon, Madam President, members of the Board. And, okay, so jumping right into this month's, or last month's Public Affairs Report, I wanted to touch on a few things regarding outreach. First would be our progress that we've made throughout this high bill and leak outreach. So our call volume, they have been trending down since July. As you'll see here, it's broken down for you from May, June, July, August, and September. So May is, I think, what we're calling just a steady flat line. And then, as you'll see, they started increasing in June with our peak in July. And then now, at least to September, but to date, I'm certain they've still decreased. But we have seen a 7.6 decrease in calls since August, so. And this doesn't necessarily mean that all calls were related to high bills or leaks. We receive calls related to stopping and starting service, payment extensions, lien releases, those, any sort of calls that come into customer service were grouped in here. The next item is service calls. So that's when a MSWD field representative is sent out to a property. They speak with the customer, they also pull a log from their meter and review it with them. So these numbers here are specific to high bill service calls. And same thing, you'll see from May to here, we went to October, which was as of October 12th, I believe that's Monday. So you'll see that we actually had our peak in September here, and this is the amount of times we had our customer service field representatives go out and speak with a customer. Before I move on from that, oh, also, this didn't make the report, however, we were able to determine the amount of leak credits that we have given since May 1, and that would be 650 leak credits. I don't have that broken down per month, but I believe also in the General Manager's report under Director of Finance, you'll see the total amount of dollars and what that represents from those 650. Any questions prior to moving on? I see a few hands.
Director, Director Martin has his hand up.
Yeah, Victoria, you mentioned in the service calls and personnel responding. In the past, it's been when they had a high water bill to check for leaks from the street to the meter. And we've, because of the COVID-19 and some other issues, we've done a little bit more inclusive checking of the property to determine leaks. And on several occasions, Water District Staff has located leaks and to and has resolved that issue. Do you have any numbers on that issue at all? So how many times have gone on to the private, onto the identified leaks?
I do not. I don't know if that's something that we can pull. I reflect, but Matt, might you have an answer to that?
I don't, off the top of my head, I can, again, look and report back to you.
It's really not something that I, I was just kind of curious. And I know because in the past, we stopped our inspection at the meter. And I have received information from homeowners who were very, very pleased and happy with staff helping them out. And kudos to those staff members who took the initiative to go beyond what had been past practice and to go on the private property to check for leaks and finding those leaks to the satisfaction of the customer. So pass my congrats along to staff, if you would. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, Vice President Duncan?
Thank you. Before I get to my question for Victoria, I just did want to point out, we have Jen Pie with us today. You've said several times, we don't have any public with us, but Jen's been here.
Okay. Hi, Dan, thanks for coming.
Victoria, I don't know if you know this, or if you can even find out, and I'm not sure if I'm wording it right. Can you tell me how many of our, not just a $10, $20, $30 jump, but our excessive skyrocket bills, if you will? When they got the new meter or the new register, how many of those were being estimated versus somebody with a functioning unit? All of a sudden, we put a new reader on it and the bill skyrocketed? Do you understand what I'm asking for?
I do.
Any way of all tracking that or figuring it out?
Might be more of a Matt question.
Ooh, pass that, bud.
We may be able to look up this information, Director Duncan. But it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little massaging of the database, but we'll see what we can do.
Okay, or even if you could get like our top 20, 25 high jump water bills? And just do, just do those 20 or 25. Give us an example of whether they had a functioning meter or if it was all, or virtually all had been estimated, and now they have an inaccurate meter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Sewell, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Director Grasha?
Okay. So just continuing with the report, just some new items that went out or went up. We have our new billboard that's been down on Palm and Dillon. So if you are driving that direction, excuse me, please feel free to take a look. We've received quite a bit of compliments on it, so we are pretty excited in continuing to put up images for the public as they're driving by with encouraging messages. The next item that you'll see is an insert that went into this past month's bill or this last cycle, and also going out with this cycle here, which is related to our rebate programs. Vice President Duncan, I believe last meeting you had asked if we had also received funds from IRWM through Prop 1 Process, Prop 1 Round 1, and we have. And our toilet rebate program is active, and we've received quite a bit of calls for that, actually. So we are excited to press on those incentives and those conservation incentives to our customers. And so this is the beginning of our promotion for that. And then also, you'll see the bill message, which is going to be found at the bottom of your bill. And that's just a helpful tip, encouraging our customers to not forget to check their irrigation timers with the time change that's coming up on November 1st. Also, you'll see our Alpha Media Report, that's for our social media management for the month of September. You'll also find a similar report for CV water counts. And then finally, our, our report for our digital advertising ads. And as mentioned, those ads are on Google and Facebook. And we had been running a "We Are Here For You" campaign with four different images that cycle through, encouraging individuals to contact us had they any questions. And then also, we had one ad that was running, directing people and customers to our leaks page on the website. And that tells you how to check for a toilet leak, check for a pool leak, and also how to check if there's just a leak and how to read your meter. So those were the ads for this past month. And that concludes my report. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. Director Martin, do you have any more questions for Victoria?
No, that was pretty comprehensive, thank you, Victoria.
Director Sewell?
Thank you very much.
Vice President Duncan?
No, ma'am.
Director Grasha? Is he unmuted by any chance?
He's just been unmuted.
Okay, thank you, I heard, okay, no. Thank you, okay, we'll move on to monthly reports. Got any words of wisdom, Arden, about these?
Well, no, other than, you know, last month, we had 11%, 11. some percent increase in our production, which meant that it was a lot hotter and our consumption was up. This month, not, not too much of an increase, as you all know. So we're getting into the cooler months. The only other thing is that our flows at the Horton Plant are, remain pretty consistent. They actually have come down as far as the peak. But this is the number I'm talking about, this is. This is the number I watched because it, we have a maintenance barrier there that we, that we, that we need to pay attention to and that. And and we need to make sure that we keep this regional plant going. Other than that, I don't have any more comments. Fairly consistent and our consumption is down. It's our per capita consumption is up a little, but I think that's because people are at home using more water, isolating. I think that's all I have.
Okay, Director Sewell? Any comments on the?
Nothing.
Okay, Vice President Duncan?
Yeah, just something I noticed here, we've, we've had more connections than we've had in the last two years for any given month, 18, which is kind of a sign of the economy and the, the building just been going on lately. So that's good. That's been since October of 2018.
Those are water meters, yeah.
Yeah, since, yeah. That's pretty good.
Director Grasha? Number nine, monthly reports?
I have nothing on that.
Okay, thank you. Directors' reports. Director Martin?
I'll go ahead and do mine today. That's all right.
Okay. Sure, yeah, go right ahead.
Okay, September 1st, City Council meeting, and the City Council had their meeting in the new city hall. No public were present. The staff was present, plexiglass dividers between the council members, and it's quite a beautiful facility. I'm looking forward to actually attending a meeting there. New convenience store at the Mission Lakes Commercial Complex at Mission Lakes in Little Morongo. Union Pacific Railroad, there were plans to have rail service, passenger rail service to the Coachella Valley to accommodate various events like Coachella Fest, the Parabola Open and things of that nature. That has fallen through due to the proposed cost, which exceeded grants by double, from eight million to 16 million. So that, that's no longer going to happen. The Coachella specific plan was, was discussed, and there was significant testimony, both pro and con concerning changes from the original approval for the project. And that's pretty much it for City Council meeting. DVBA legislative meeting on Thursday, October 1st. Todd Hucks from the Aguascaliente Banque Indians gave an update on tribal development, including the Cathedral City Casino and the Cultural Center in Palm Springs. The casino is due to be open before the New Year, so that's exciting. Also discussed was the, the purpose for listening meetings that are taking place with the county, where there's represented from the County Board of Supervisors present. And they have established a number of listening sessions to address systematic racial issues in various county departments. Also discussed at the legislative meeting were the, in Desert Hot Springs, the Kmart update development that's taking place there. A new chiropractor's office is opening up. GHA and Skyborne and other housing developments were discussed. Moving on to, oh, also, September, I'm sorry, September 10th, DVBA board meeting, nothing to report there. On September 10th, I represented Supervisor Hewitt on the Seavag Conservation Commission meeting, and they discussed an acquisition of 15 acres of land in the Thousand Palms area and riveting conversation on the Coachella Valley Fringe Toad Lizard, the Flat-tailed Horned Lizard, the Burrowing Owl, and the Honey Mesquite Eclat. Gosh. On September 15th, County Board of Supervisors meeting again. There was a COVID-19 update with 25 public comments. And a plan was approved for the, that's when they approved the board listening sessions that'll take place representing four different districts within the county. Most interesting for me was a discussion concerning hemp activities ordinance. And the County Board of Supervisors addressing it. That's something that City of Desert Hot Springs worked on three to four years ago and in the past and been, been operating quite successfully. So kudos to the City of Desert Hot Springs for being kind of ahead of the curve on that issue. Let's see, on September 16th and the 23rd, I attended two meetings via Zoom, and that was a discussion and approval of pumping permits on tribal land. September 17th, DVBA networking night, nothing to report there. September 22nd, County Board of Supervisors meeting, meeting was held in person, including the public. And many, I would say about a third of the people that attended the meeting weren't wearing masks, and that included three of the board members, so the board supervisors were not wearing masks. I thought that was interesting. There was a brief summary of Tier 2 restriction guidelines, also known as RED guidelines. The public comments were significant. There were 40 speakers speaking out against the restrictions that the county had imposed and were demanding that all businesses, schools, and churches open. That's kind of interesting. And lastly, Cabot's Museum Foundation Board meeting, nothing to report, nothing to report there. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. I don't see anything for Director Grasha. I don't see anything for Director Sewell. Vice President Martin, do you want to do yours today? Do you want to do them today?
Yes.
I mean, sorry, President Duncan, I'm looking, I'm looking at the thing. Never mind, sorry.
Yes, I will.
Okay.
September 1st, DWA Board meeting. Nothing to report there, really, almost an administrative meeting. Most of their, their stuff was on classifications and salaries and stuff like that. It was all in-house stuff. September 8th, CBWD Board meeting. They had some dealings with the South Coast Air Quality Management. They passed on that. They lost, due to a car crash, they lost one of their employees. Michelle Malahoff, she was in their environmental services. They had a very nice tribute with photos of her and a lot of the staff and board members and whatnot. Very touching tribute to her. Russ Martin already touched on this during the CBCC meeting, was the bio report. A lot of it was on the lizards, the turtles, the desert habitat, migration of the sand dunes, moving, how it affects all the critters. But they also elected officers for next year. Linda Evans, Mayor Volkanian, will be chair again for 2021. Same with the E and E meeting, Linda Evans became or will be president again. Salt and Sea Management Program. Of GIL, well, I can't read the severance. Salt and Sea Program Manager, California Department of Natural Wildlife, gave a big presentation on the Salt and Sea. I asked how that tied in with Phil Rosentrader? And she said, yeah, they, they work together. They're going, they're hand in hand, working on this thing. But in the Desert Sun article, they were asking the public again for recommendations. How do we fix this thing? What do we do with the Salt and Sea? It was kind of, kind of odd just to see that interaction. September 15th, DWA Board meeting. I've mentioned this before, the bulk of that meeting was the state water contractors meeting. If and when we ever do become our own contractor, we will have to hire a good, experienced, well-trained person in water contracting. We're not going to be able to hire somebody out of the box and expect them to learn and catch up real quick. September 22nd, CBWD Board meeting. I haven't even noticed, it was a real quick meeting. They did some, they're doing a lot of construction, basically, is what that was on their construction. And then lastly, whoop, nope, that's the October meeting. So that's it for September.
Okay, thank you. Before you go, Danny and Randy, I just wanted to see, can you do the November 12th CBCC and EE meetings? I have a comment.
November 12th?
Yes, that's what I have on my calendar. That's the dates that I have.
Let me check real quick. Yes, I can.
Okay, Dory, Randy's going to do the November 12th Seavag meetings for us.
Noted, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Director Grasha doesn't have any. I don't have any, so I guess that's the end of that part. Directors' reports, correspondence is in a packet. District Council comments?
Yes, we will have a closed session today. It will be, it's listed at Item 15, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. And that's one case, George Padilla and Sharon Marino versus, versus Mission Springs Water District, and the case number is RIC 2003782.
Thank you. Okay, General Manager's report?
Okay, let me start out by saying that, as I told you in my report last time, they will be voting at the annex next door, and it will be different this year. They'll, I actually think it's going to be open several days, and I'm not exactly sure how that will work out, but, you know, they're allowing a lot of people more time to bring their vote in, I guess. I have replenished, as you will see in the General Manager's report, the United Way Fund again, bring, to bring it up to like 15,000, thinking that that was the direction that, that you would want me to, to go. The other thing is, is that Laura also yesterday sent another sort of addendum or whatever you want to say, from, to kind of add to her report, and I'll see, I'll see if we can't get it added, Dory, to the, to the agenda for, for Monday, or at least included as a document, where she basically listed the executive order entitled "Modernizing Americans' Water Resource Management and Water Infrastructure." This, the most salient or significant thing of that is that it creates a water subcabinet, and it lists the people in that subcabinet. I'm not sure how that translates into anything for us, but it was the one thing that, that the one development that has, that, that did happen. And then the rest is included in the, in the report. Now, we have a number of different things in the General Manager's report, if you have any questions, and I've included everything. You've asked me to include a bunch of things, and Matt worked on those and has included them. The only other thing I can say is that we did get plexiglass separators for the boardroom in case we do decide to use them. They weren't that expensive. In fact, they were quite inexpensive. And that really concludes my report. Okay?
Okay, Directors' comments. Director Martin? Oh, he's gone away for a second. Okay, well, we'll start with Director Sewell.
Yeah, I just wanted to compliment the General Manager and any staff that helped with the General Manager Report. I thought all the information in there was very interesting, and a lot of it was some of the information Director Martin had requested. So just thank you for putting that together for us.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Duncan?
Yeah, adding on to what Arden said earlier about the annex next door. If my number is right, it'll be open from October 31st through November 3rd. They're calling them now voter assistance areas, where you can go in, talk to somebody from the county registrar's off, in office if you want. You can drop off a ballot. If you want to exchange a mail ballot for a traditional ballot, you can do that. But it's, it's open those, those four days. Other than that, no, thank you. I don't have any other comments.
Thank you. Director Grasha?
Yes, thank you. You know, some of the things that we hear over and over again when we're corresponding with people in the community in different ways, I've, I've had this asked of me, I don't know, at least five times and probably closer to 10 times. And that is how we, on our bills that everyone gets, I guess they're 10,300 meters, so we send this bill out to 10,300 people, and we disguise what is the rack rate, which is the replenishment assessment charge that all agencies pay in the Coachella Valley and probably any agency that withdraws from the aqua firm. We disguise it as a tax that's imposed upon our citizens by our neighboring agency, which is Desert Water Agency. And when people find out what the truth is, they're always surprised that we're, that we're somehow trying to disguise the truth. And if people knew, you know, were led to the truth, they would feel good about paying that. It's a very important part of our sustainability work that we do in the water industry, and without it, the well would go dry. So I would like the district staff to consider, I can't imagine this was voted on by the board, it probably was something done by the executive committee, and I can't imagine that board ever approved of this, at least officially, because you approve of it, it's really, it's, it's not being truthful, pretty much telling a lie every time you send a water bill out. 10,300 times, times however many years you've been trying to get away. It looks like it goes back to 2004 at least. And I would like to see that changed on the bill and, and to reflect more accurately what it is, and that is a replenishment assessment charge that all agencies pay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now it's my, Director Martin, I wonder what happened. Anyway, okay, don't see him in his chair. Hey, I'll do it first, and oh, there he is, Director Martin.
I'm sorry, I had to leave for momentarily.
I noticed that. Okay, it's your Directors' comments time.
Yeah, just one, one comment I had to, to make. I wanted to know from Arden whether or not he got our Cabot's Museum mask yet.
Oh, yes, I have it here.
Oh, great, good, 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 good.
With the letter that you saw, it was a nice mask. Now, I don't know that I've taken it out of the package or anything yet, so I'm sure to wear it for you.
Perfect, thank you.
Wes Mancy wants it.
No, I got one too, thank you. Thank, the, thank you. You are a board member of there and, and Museum for that. I haven't tried it on.
Yes, absolutely. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, I got a couple of things here. I, Randy had mentioned, and I see pictures in our packet under correspondence, I think it was, about those, but those wipes getting into our sewer and being a real issue for our guys. Well, septic tank pumpers are having the same issues, just to let you know, the, the between wipes and sanitary napkins and that kind of stuff, tampons, septic tank pumpers. wipes and sanitary napkins and that kind of stuff, tampons, septic tank pumpers, it's, they're really having a big issue of pumping people's tanks because I think we maybe should somehow, maybe we have, mentioned, people keep mentioning over and over that wipes are not flushable, even if they say they are. Anyway, okay. What else did I have here? I don't know. Oh, today, today, October 15th, is the Great California Shakeout. Just, just a time, and today is the day we reflect on our earthquake preparedness, so look around you, look around at your home, fill your water containers, make sure you have food, and all that kind of stuff. So today is, is the day where I believe lots of organizations had, they call them fire or alarms where the earthquake stuff going on. Anyway, so just so I remind you of that, stay safe during an earthquake.
Randy has something.
President Wright?
Okay, that's, that's all I was going to say. Vice President Duncan?
One more thing, and I think today is actually the day, happy birthday to Nancy. Isn't it today or tomorrow?
It's Saturday, and Monday, happy birthday, back Monday was Randy's birthday, so happy to you, happy birthday, or belated, no, yours is belated, mine's after the fact.
I, I don't do birthdays anymore, so we didn't miss it, it's just yours.
Oh, I don't do any either. I, I stopped like 39, so.
All right, we'll pile them all on Ivan.
Yeah, Ivan can take them for us for a while. Okay, thank you. So we are going into a closed session. Mr. Pinkney?
Yes, we are, and it's Item 15, I already went over it and announced it, we're going to closed session on that item.
Okay, Dory, tell us when you're ready for us to do what we need to do.
Okay. I'm putting you in the room as we speak. Okay. Does Mr. Macy need to be in that? No, okay. There you go.
The host is inviting you to. Hey, you went out too soon, Steve, anyway.
Oh, I thought we were done.
Well, Pinkney spoke in at the moment, just telling us about closed session rules. Okay, did we, everybody come back? We don't have John.
We're still waiting on John and Tom.
Okay.
I don't think Tom's going to come back into open session.
Okay, you're good.
Thanks, thank Tom, I was going to thank him at this stage, but thank, thank him too, again. Okay, so, number 16, report on action taken in closed session.
Yes, the board met in closed session, and the item that we, that the board met on was Item 15, Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91. One case, George Padilla and Sharon Marino versus Mission Springs Water District, case number RIC 2003782. There was reportable action taken on that item. There was a motion that was made by Director Martin and a second by Vice President Duncan, authorizing districts' legal counsel to defend against the action, and the vote taken in closed session was as follows. President Wright voted to defend the case. Director Martin voted to defend the case. Director Grasha voted to defend the case. Director Sewell voted to defend the case. And Vice President Duncan voted to defend the case. And that concludes the closed session.
John, could you please repeat your statement that you gave at the end of the closed session before we all came back out here?
Well, just a reminder that the closed session was held under the attorney-client privilege, which is authorized under the Brown Act, and that there, there may be situations where people in the community want to ask you about the matter, and under the Brown Act, the board is prohibited from discussing the, the conversation that occurs in closed session under the attorney-client privilege outside of that meeting. So just.
There's no restriction from discussing in general the issues regarding the district and the failures of the district that got us to the point where we're now being sued. Let's make it clear that directors are not ordered by any court to not talk about the shortcomings of the people that represent them.
Okay, without any further ado, I, John, did you say something?
I think we're finished.
Okay, without any further ado, I adjourn this meeting.